So Christine's going to be late and Paul, we're not sure if and when he can come. So we're gonna start, okay? All right? So welcome to the Milford School Committee Meeting of October 4th. First, I'd like, we have two student representatives with us tonight. I want to thank you both for coming very much. It's not often that we have the honor of having students come in and sit with us. And please, if you have any questions or if you have any comments, please just jump right in and I'm sure any of the committee members will be happy to answer any questions or comments that you have, okay? The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. This evening, we have the minutes of September 16th, the regular and executive sessions of the Milford School Committee. Has everyone had an opportunity to read those minutes? And does anyone have any corrections I'd like to post to those minutes? Okay? So a motion from Dawn, a second from Mike, all in favor of approving the minutes for September 6, 2012, all opposed, unanimous in favor, the motion carries. The next item on our agenda, our announcements, correspondence, and just, oh, I'm sorry, pursuant to our open meeting law, the tutorial that we had at our last meeting, I do want to announce that tonight's meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV and Media from the Milford Daily News, Town Crier, and Patcher in attendance. If anyone would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, you can transmit the meeting through any medium, please let me know. Thank you. Now for announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does any member of... Yes, sir?
I think there is another set of executive minutes in here.
Oh, there were. Yes. Did I take a motion on both the regular session and the executive session? Or did I not take the motion on the executive?
The regular session.
Okay. So if I can have a motion on the executive session minutes, a motion from Rob, a second from Scott, all in favor of approving the executive session minutes, all opposed, unanimous in favor, the motion carries. Absolutely. We're being watched every night. Now, the next item on our agenda, after the two very brief interruptions, are announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does any member have announcements, correspondence, or distributions? Rob?
Yeah. I would just like to comment. Earlier this week, we had a student, a young man in our community, that was in a bicycle accident with a motor vehicle. Very concerning to all of us, as you can imagine. And I understand he is doing better, he's on his way to recovery, you know, which is just wonderful news. And I thought, I wanted to take this opportunity to remind students and parents the importance of wearing helmets. If you're gonna be on a bicycle, riding in town, please, please, wear a helmet. It's the law, like wearing your seatbelt in the car, it's for your own safety. And I just thought it would be good to throw that out there. I think the Milford Police Department, on occasion, will have some bike fairs that they do as well, down the Milford Youth Center. And at those, they do cover safety tips and they do give out a number of helmets, I understand, at some of those. So again, just sort of as a informational announcement to make. Thank you.
Any other members?
Mr. Chairman, just to comment on that, Rob, as well, I had an update tonight from Nicholas's mother, just to give a progress update to the community. The community has been obviously very concerned about this accident. You know, we've been feeling a lot of telephone calls, there's been a lot of thoughts and prayers for Nick. The update as of tonight is he's up, he's able to walk, although not so steady on his feet. He's still at the hospital, although he's out of the ICU, and he seems to be making a full recovery. So they want to make sure that everybody in the community knows that, and the point is very well taken. Wear a helmet, be safe, keep your eyes out around you, if you're on a bike or if you're in a car, that's for sure. Yeah, that's a great point. Thanks. So that's the latest update on Nick, so we're glad that he's doing well. A couple of other announcements, if I may? We have an Eagle Scout in Milford who, on Sunday, if you haven't seen these wooden fenced structures between Memorial School and Stacy Middle School, there are these two, there's a picture of it, it's kinda hard to see here, but it's a picture of these wooden pens, it's called Gaga Ball. I guess the kids learned this at nature's classroom. And the Eagle Scout thought it would be a good parcel of land. We talked to Rob, who's here, and with Mike Brashani, and agreed to use that space. And so, anyway, Alex Croto on Sunday will be having complimentary hot dogs and drinks, if you're interested in that, and will teach everybody how to play the game of Gaga Ball, which is a lot of fun. It's sort of a low-impact dodgeball, as I understand. But you're in this nice little pen, too, so you can't run far. But that'll be on Sunday, just another opportunity for our kids that's unique and...
And those are actually very impressive-looking courts.
They really are.
I'm not sure if anyone's been down there to see them, I was down there last weekend. And they're pretty impressive, a lot of work and effort went into those, so...
So you did a nice job, another Eagle Scout making Milford proud. We also, speaking of making Milford proud, we, as we talked about in the past with our accreditation efforts, and I know the committee's been reminded, this is just another reminder that the NIASC, this is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, the Visiting Committee will be coming to Milford on Sunday, October 21st, through Wednesday, October 24th. So Sunday will be the day, and I think you've been provided with a save-the-date, save-the-time, we'll follow up on that as well, if you're able to attend on the 21st to meet the accreditation team that will be visiting. The Visiting Committee is a team of 18 educators from around New England, so this is more like a peer-review process, if you haven't ventured that before. They'll be observing classrooms, interviewing staff, and talking with parents. The visit is the culmination of three years of hard work by the elementary school staff, assessing specific standards set forth by the, by NIASC. At the conclusion of the visit, the committee will create a report outlining commendations and recommendations, and we're hopeful this will be a positive experience for everybody. The interest among staff, just to emphasize that, when, for example, Woodland School, when Craig asked his staff, who might be able to be a volunteer to come on a Sunday, there were so many staff members volunteering for that on a Sunday that he actually had to turn them away, because it was just more than he needed. So the staff are obviously very excited about this, as much as the administrators are. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Title I is one of the grants, entitlement grants that we submit. Our recent application for the use of funds, as it turns out, was a model application. They invited Patty Kelly, who's serving the role as Title I Director, to join with Lowell and Westfield to be on a panel, to tell districts around the Commonwealth what an application should look like. So it's nice to be the frontrunner on that, wanted to announce that to the committee. And finally, on Thursday, October 18th, the Governor's Youth Council will be hosting a screening documentary film called Bully at the AMC Lowes Boston Common 19 Theater. We have a student, Rebecca Rollo, from Milford High School, who'll be representing the Milford Public Schools, recommendation of the high school principal, Mr. Tempesta, and she'll be representing all of Milford's schools on the 18th, along with Gina Bird, who will accompany her for the day in our district. So that's one of our anti-bullying efforts, getting students directly involved in that. So that's what I have for announcements this evening.
Great. Any other members? Renouncements? Great. So the next item on our agenda is going to be, I'm sorry, is our invitation to speak. Has anyone come today to address the committee? Not seeing anyone, I'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is a report on building maintenance. Mr. Rob Quinn has been kind enough to join us this evening. He is the person we depend on to make sure that all of our facilities are maintained at the Milford Public Schools. And I think that the report that he's gonna present to us is, would be a report that's sort of unique in my time on the committee, it's not one that we've had presented to us before. And what I asked Mr. Quinn to do is to give us a presentation of the work that's been going on in the buildings, the work that will continue to go on in the buildings as they pertain to maintenance, to make sure that the buildings are being maintained. We know that the buildings are being maintained. And we also have some additional challenges, as everyone here knows. We did go in front of town meeting, and we have asked them, we have asked the town to help us either renovate or reconstruct the Woodland School. And what that's going to mean is that it's very difficult for us to go and ask the town for more capital in the future. And so, the improvement projects that we have, that before, we might've gone in front of the Finance Committee to see if we could get the capital, if we could get some capital to construct some of these projects. I just want to show the town that we're being proactive and we're finding ways to do these projects out of our existing budget, and that we're not going to continue to go to the town to get some of these pieces done. Now, if a roof needs to be replaced, we all understand that that's a different item. But a lot of these pieces that we've presented in the past to the Finance Committee, I think, and Rob thinks that we can pull these into our budget and find a way to plan for these, and then show our commitment, our commitment to the taxpayers, that we know that we're asking for a lot, but we're also doing a lot on our end to make sure that we're taking care of our buildings in such a way that we're not gonna need to come back to the well, so to speak. So I guess I'd like to start. Rob, thank you again for coming in to speak with us tonight. So I'll hand it over to you, I'll chime in if that's okay, and I would encourage any committee member, if they have any questions or if they want to discuss some of these pieces, to please chime in. He did provide us, actually, with some lengthy reports on some of the improvements, I believe they go back to 2004, I think, is where some of these reports begin to show us some of the improvements that have been done. And if you'll indulge us, Rob, if we can just chime in while you're sort of giving your presentation, and we'll just, you know, back and forth, I think is probably the best way to handle this, okay?
Sure.
Great.
Thanks for having me, guys, I do appreciate the, you know, support you guys, and show it to maintenance and to myself. Like Patrick said, you receive two documents, one is the major project, District Wide document, which goes back to FY04. This is an ongoing document that I keep for myself, you know, so if you guys have to go in front of the Finance Committee or any other committee in town, wondering, you know, what the hell are you guys doing with all the money? Well, this is, this will show, you know, that we are actually producing with the money that's given to the district for maintenance. I don't want to read it to you, if you want to go, I'm sure you've all read it, if there's any questions as to what was done on one of the projects, I can answer that.
And for the public's benefit, the list that was provided to us, it starts in fiscal year '04, and it has a lot of regular maintenance items, interior painting, it has, you know, replacing ductwork and replacing sort of larger improvements, above and beyond just sort of putting in new light bulbs, in general maintenance that we're doing. But there's also some phased projects here, so I noticed, you know, there was a, in fiscal year '04, there was a Phase 1 automatic temperature control grade, and then Phase 2 was done the following year. Could you just talk a little bit about some of the phasings of those projects? I think that we had some discussion about how some of these improvements are being done as the capital becomes available. And so I think the way that you plan the phasing in of some of these pieces, I think that that would be of interest to members of the committee.
I was instructed by Mr. Trembley and Ms. Perry to work off of the capital improvement plan that we put together for the CIC, and to try to, over the past few years, try to keep us from having to go to CIC for money. So with that being said, I can take lockers, for instance, at the Milford High. Lockers at Milford High were rated at a range of $200,000 to $250,000. So what we've done is we've talked with the staff and the administration of the high school and asked them, where's the most problematic areas for lockers right now? And they'd tell us, and we would begin phasing in replacement of those lockers. Now, you can't have it both ways, you can't say, listen, I want all the lockers replaced, but I also don't want to go to CIC for money. So the way we accomplish that is by phasing. And we do that, we've done that in a number of areas throughout the district, we've done that at Memorial School with the carpet and with the heating supply and return lines, we've done that at, you know, all of our buildings. What we work on is, we work off of this, and Dawn, I know that you've asked us to upgrade the security and surveillance systems throughout the district, and the meeting that we had two days ago, you understand that we're phasing that, we're in our first phase right now, implementing a platform district-wide, and, you know, we'll just continue to do that. And our goal is to not go back, not to go back to CIC for building maintenance items that we know we can handle in-house. The other document that you got is what we're looking to, to FY13, the proposed maintenance projects for FY13. Again, I can read this to you, I know you've all read it. District-wide items, fire extinguishers are all tested and inspected and serviced annually, the fire alarm systems are done as well, emergency generators are also done, elevators are done, the boilers are all open, clean, inspected, enclosed, inspected by the insurance companies, the backflip preventers are all tested, the HVAC equipment is all PMed, and what PM means is preventative maintenance. And what we do on that is we change all the belts, the filters, we grease all the bearings, change the filters and et cetera. The parking lot markings are all painted, the catch basins throughout the district are all cleaned, we resurface the gym floors. Right now, we're in the process, through a National Grid program, of upgrading all our exterior lighting from, to LED lights, which will save us, you know, a lot of money on the electricity. And we're starting our Phase 1 of the security camera installations. What we don't want to have throughout this district is multiple platforms, little pieces of programs throughout, I want to have one non-proprietary platform to build throughout the district on our security cameras. And we're using the platform that we just installed at the new field complex. It's a great platform, Dawn and Mike, we met, the subcommittee met, you saw how it all works, it's beautiful. Our next phase right now is to get Brookside's cameras onboard and to expand the high school cameras. We've also, I've also met with Nancy Angelini, the principal of now Stacy and East, and gotten her first priority. So we're gonna begin to phase them into those schools. We also have our playgrounds inspected annually, our gyms inspected annually, and the IPM programs, which is pest control. And our goal, even though we don't have to by code, is to get all of our buildings up to present-day ADA compliance. And what that means is, if I make a repair to, let's say, this room, if I had to replace that door, when I replace that door, I replace it to ADA 2012. So that means the handle, the hinge, the swing, everything is brought up to present-day code whenever possible. We can jump onto Milford High School.
Yeah, and some of these, I believe you were explaining to me in an earlier meeting that we had, that some of these pieces are maintenance pieces that need to be done on a yearly basis in some of these buildings, is that correct?
Right.
Could you highlight some of the differences between the yearly pieces that we schedule and plan for, and some of the pieces, how you would identify what needs repair, how you'd identify what we need to work on next? So there's sort of two layers to how these maintenance pieces are done.
Yeah, they're mandated items by the state and Fed that we have to, like, for example, fire extinguishers, they must be inspected every year, that's a built-in cost, we have to do that. Some, you know, the boilers have to be inspected, the generators have to be inspected, we have to have paperwork showing that we're maintaining these items. That's all mandated. Now, items, you know, we sit with the admin, I sit with the administration throughout the schools and ask them, you know, what's your priority, what would you like to see done? Right now, a big push is technology. Honestly, I can't speak to how it all works, I build it, they use it, and they're all happy. So, right now, our schools are full of chalkboards, all but Brookside. They don't even make chalk, they don't put chalkboards in schools anymore, they put whiteboards. And the reason they put whiteboards is because you can interact with the students from projectors and MIMOs and so forth on that whiteboard. So what we've been doing, phasing, again, phasing in, converting our chalkboards to whiteboards. For example, at the high school, the math department is done, the next priority is the science department, and then we move forward from there. Now, once you create a whiteboard, you run power to run a projector that'll project on that whiteboard, and then the teacher can work from his or her laptop or desktop and project onto that whiteboard, and the kids in the classroom can interact. There's the, excuse me, the inspections for safety, like the gym inspections, these are all things that are mandated by the state, we have to show that we're maintaining our properties. The only, the reason that we're positive with the MSBA, the reason that we're able to have the opportunity to build Woodland is because we have proven to the state that we're maintaining our buildings. And that's a big piece, I mean, that's, we can't, we can't say, you know, Woodland's maybe coming offline in four to six years, let's stop putting money into it. No, because the state, they're not gonna fund our projects if we don't show that we're stepping up and maintaining our buildings ourselves. And I think that's very important for the public to know, so if you see me, you know, fixing something at East or Woodland, well, the reality is, if we don't do that, the state's gonna say, listen, if you can't maintain your own properties, don't come to us looking for, you know, a reimbursement.
There aren't pieces that are falling through the cracks, so to speak, or at least that's been my impression.
Right. Well, we can...
Can I ask a question? Who is the "we"? Who works with you? Do you have a maintenance staff that does all these repairs? Are you, do you do most of them? Is it the custodial staff? Do you hire outside contractors?
What I have, my background is commercial HVAC, so, you know, I'm not tooting my own horn, but I can actually diagnose probably 70 to 80% of the problems that we have, which goes a long way, because I don't have to pay someone to come out and tell me that you have to replace the trap on this, you know, unit. I know that you have to replace the trap, but what, hands-on people, we have one HVAC technician, Brian Larendo, he goes around the district and he'll do a lot of in-house stuff. Our custodians, no, they're more in line with just cleaning, they don't do a lot of maintenance. So stuff that Brian and I can't handle, we will sub out at this time.
So, Rob, if you had to put a percentage, what would you say the percentage of the repairs that are being done annually are being done by employees of the school district?
I would say small repairs, you know, faucets leaking, I mean, how many toilets and urinals and so forth, that's all done in-house, but anything major is subbed out. Right.
I noticed that throughout many of these years, there was a lot of, there was a lot of information around painting, painting different areas of the schools. I know in the past, through the Sheriff's Department of Western County, we'd partnered with the Sheriff's Department to do larger painting products, projects. Is that something that you're still exploring and still leveraging it as needed?
Yeah, we did do that, I think we did it for three years. It was mainly at Stacy when we had all the water damage before we replaced the roof and repointed. I'll explore that again, I'm gonna be honest with you, and it's, sometimes it's not cost-effective because you don't get as much out of them in the short window that we have to accomplish. You know, we have, you know, a month and a half, two months in the summer to get everything done, and they work, you know, they have a short window that they work by union, they come out on the job, they're there for six hours, we feed them, they take their breaks and they leave. Sometimes it's not, it's not as effective as I would like it to be. But with that being said, you know, we'll still keep them in mind if it, you know, if it deems possible.
Yeah, just as we're thinking about, you know, again, the cost-effective ways of being able to do it, to your point, you know, let's make sure it makes sense, definitely, certainly trust your good judgment on that.
Right.
I think I heard something about one of the classes volunteering to paint the catwalk.
Yeah, Mike Tempesta came to me and he said, there's a, I don't know the students, but there's a group of students that want to beautify the school, school spirit type of thing. He, the student did a nice job, he actually sent some photos of what it would look like finished. What they want to do is they want to paint, and I asked them not to paint the exterior. They wanted to paint, they want to paint the interior pillars in the catwalk, they want to paint them red, much like the same scheme that we have in the gyms throughout the district with the red and the white. The reason I asked them not to paint the exterior is because unless concrete is sealed correctly, paint's gonna peel. So we're gonna be, it'd be more of a maintenance nightmare if they painted the pillars, they'd constantly be painting, we'd be scraping them, and it just wouldn't, it would look good for about maybe a month and a half, so I asked them to stick with the interior. But Mike came to me today with the list of supplies that he wants and needs to get that done, you know, we'll get those supplies to those kids.
Thanks for coming in. When you do sub out some of this work, what do you, put it out to bid and you get three quotes? How does that process work? Do you have people you regularly use?
It is, we're bound by law as to how we have to bid things. We have to pay prevailing wage, we have to bid projects that are over a certain dollar amount, and when the project is at that point, we will bid it that way.
But if it's not? How much money is that?
Depending on the project, there's thresholds, there's a $5,000 threshold, there's a $10,000 threshold, there's a $25,000 threshold, and then I believe there's a hundred and over $100,000, they're all different bidding laws pertaining to how large the project is.
Okay, so like for jobs under $5,000, let's say, that you can't do, you just open up the Yellow Pages?
Oh, no, I've been here for what, I'm on my 10th year, so I have contracts that I have confidence in that have, you know, have done good work for us, and I'm not gonna just open up the Yellow Pages and call a plumber out of the Yellow Pages.
Yeah, and I didn't think you did, I guess, I'm trying to understand, then you have people with proven track record that you go to.
Correct. Right. Yeah.
While we're speaking about budget, Rob, could you just speak a little bit towards how the state mandates the amount of money that needs to be spent on each building, how that, how that process works and how you make sure that we stay in compliance with that?
I can't give you the exact numbers as to what the state mandates, but what I can tell you is that we have multiple budgets per building. We have, in each building, we have a custodial supply line item, we also have a maintenance of grounds line item, we have a contracted services line item, a supplies line item, and equipment repair line item. And each building, you know, for example, if I had to have some plumbing work done at Memorial, I would write the PO out of Memorial's contracted services line item. I don't know what the threshold is per square foot as to what the state mandates, but, you know, that's how we, that's how we run it right now.
Have you, in your experience in the commercial world or in the business world, have you had, do you have an idea of what, in an industrial application or in a business setting, what the dollars per square foot maintenance spend would be, and how that would compare to what's happening in our school district?
I don't, I don't know what that number is. I could, you know, I could easily figure it out, but I don't know what that number is, and are you looking to see if we have enough money in these budgets? I don't know how it's relevant.
You know, I think, I think what I'm personally interested in is to know that we are spending the right amount of money on these buildings to make sure that we have enough opportunity to be proactive, that we're not pushing off things that need to get fixed because, because we're just spending to a minimum and just moving along with the state standard, not necessarily looking critically at that, to making sure that that's what's correct for Milford. I think another part of that is it gives us an opportunity to challenge some of the building principals, to find ways to save within their own budgets in terms of the way that they're running their building. I think, Dawn, you had made the example, if you could give that, the coffee cup example that we had, that we had heard.
I was at Consiglio's not too long ago, and I was talking to one of the gentlemen who works for him, and, you know, they were talking about how the construction industry just took such a hit in 2008, so they went around and they just tried to find ways to cut costs. And so one of the things that they found were, you know, they had those coffee dispensers where you put the one in at a time, and they decided to replace that with just a regular, you know, the old Mr. Coffee, and that one thing saved them over $8,000 in one year. So then they started doing other things, and I mean, they were able to cut costs to the point where, you know, Anthony didn't have to lay anybody off. And, you know, that's one of the things, I had mentioned a while back, was could we do some sort of a, even an incentive program or something that we could identify areas that we can cut costs? You know, I mean, with a $39 million budget between all the schools, if we could save $50,000 a year, you know, that would be a teacher, you know, or...
And I think it dovels very well into Christine's point, that we should be looking at more line items in each of these buildings when the principals come to present their budgeting process this year, so we can look more deeply at a lot of the pieces that go into crafting that budget and saying, you know, are there savings that we can find? Is it possible that we can manage these buildings in a different way? So we're being more efficient, so we have more opportunity to spend on the things that we need to replace or that we need to improve in these school buildings. As though I know that that wouldn't be something that, you know, you would necessarily work on alone, but I think, Bob, that that would be a challenge, especially as the budget season is coming up, and one of the reasons why, you know, I asked Rob to come in tonight is not only to explain to the public how many of these building processes work, but also say, as we enter the budget season now, we have an opportunity to not only roll some of these capital costs into our existing school budget, so we aren't going to the town and asking for money, but also we can challenge our building principals to find efficiencies in their own buildings, so we have more funds that are available to be more proactive about some of these, these maintenance issues as we move forward. Now, I'm not sure if, if the principals, I mean, in your opinion, how could we challenge them to find some of these pieces?
What we do is, I mean, the budget process, the vetting that we do is pretty comprehensive, the committee has been part of that in the years past. This year, what we'll do is we'll include, Rob, we did include you at some of the meetings toward the end with the principals, but maybe have you work with us when we sit with Kathy and I from the very beginning with the principals, and as you meet with them to address what their technologies, their surveillance technology needs are, just find ways with them to try to find efficiencies. As you've been doing with the lighting, for example, you know, that's a good example of what you did with National Grid, we'll find more ways. So the process, I think, is just to include, Rob, at the table from the beginning of the conversation with the principals and say, the priority is to really make sure we have, and we'll find out that number of what, you know, there's a required net school spending on instruction for kids, presumably there's a number, I don't know, Kathy, if you know that number, there's a number...
I don't remember the, the number itself, but I do know that Milford is way above our maintenance needs.
Milford's spending is above what they were...
And Rob kind of alluded to that, when the MSBA, they come in every year and do their own assessment of our buildings, and they actually go through an entire checklist and verify to their point of view that we are maintaining our buildings, and that coupled with our budget, we, Milford is doing very well.
Kathy, I think what, it's been at least three times that I walked every building with a member, a representative from the MSBA, where they... with a member, a representative from the MSBA where they wanted to know, what have you done? I mean, it was weeks worth, yeah, and I had to show them, we've done this, we've done this, we've done energy upgrades, and, and that was the reason Milford, you know, he's getting the positive reviews. That's why you guys are at the top of the list.
Are, are those scheduled visits, or do they pop in and announce to make some of those visits?
I think they give me a couple of weeks' notice.
It's part of their senior studies, yeah, they did when they assess the viability of a project. One other thing that we do, the committee may or may not recall from last year that we've, we've, we've been doing successfully with English Language Learner Program budgets and music budgets in particulars, so that we don't have to have these capital outlays for, let's say you have, I don't know, just for an example, some sort of stage material might need for a chorus, like the choral risers, for example. In any given year in a music budget, it would not be affordable to buy, they're very expensive to buy that in anyone, and, and rather than ask for this or, or have our, the condition of the risers just, you know, that they're not safe for our kids, we've worked it out where we'll sit with all the principals, Nadine will sit with all the principals, and, and come up with a five-year plan within the department's budget. So we're thinking about like a, like a capital plan that we do for the district, but now, within the, the department, Woodland School might say, well, yeah, I can go two or three years now and forego my budget and give those monies to Stacy where they're going to need it, but I know in 2015 that I'm going to need this. And everyone's on the map, all the principals sign off. What we've done is we've, we've basically level funded that line prospectively for five years, so there's no increase to that line, but yet they have increased purchase power by the consolidation of all those monies appropriated to whatever school's most appropriate. That's worked successfully. It's a creative way that's allowed us to build programs without having to add extra money to the budget or make things capital. I believe we could do the same thing, and, and I think that you're already doing that to some extent, because you, you have to negotiate how the winter's going to be if we have money for, you know, remaining for, you know, for paying for those bills, and you may have, be able to free up some, some money at the end of these projects that have been longstanding. So what we hope to get to, and we talked about this in a prior meeting, and I don't mean to, to steal your presentation, Rob, but on the capital plan is to really get to a point for the finance committee and for the capital improvement committee, is to have a plan that looks from the Woodland School project, that being done forward, to say, well, eventually at some point, we'll have to look at roofs and repointing and windows and whatever that may be for our schools for maintenance, and those are the kinds of things that we want to make sure are not in our school budget but are truly capital. Everything else, the way Rob has approached it with phasing, I think is just commendable. And if, and that's the right approach, and it's worked well for us. So I, we'll continue to look at that at the budget and say, what is the most important priority, and then have principals put that in that perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that discourse between the principals, where the principals meet with, meet with Rob, and I'm sure you probably take part in some of those meetings as well. I mean, I think that that's going to pay dividends if, if we're all working in concert. Now, back to that capital improvement plan that we're all so familiar with, that we've seen so many times, that we give to the finance committee every year. I mean, on there are things like lockers and other small pieces. I mean, would you say now that you're comfortable, would you say to us now that you're probably comfortable rolling those, the phasing in of those projects into our budget and we can actually make that capital improvement plan something that's more forward-looking after, after the, after the, we understand more what's happened with Woodland?
I do. I, I, but again, and I don't want to sound redundant, but you're not going to get it all in one year. So you're going to hear teachers that are unhappy that they didn't get their whiteboards, because, you know, the priority was set, and with a phase, when you phase, that means somebody's not going to be happy. That's reality. If you, if you can accept that, which I can, and I believe the principals can, then this, this system works great. If I lived in town, this is how I'd like to see it done. You know, a perfect example is the locker rooms, locker room facilities downstairs. We just stripped all the shower walls, re-tiled them, replaced all the mixing valves. It's phase one of that locker room upgrade. You know, we replaced the lockers. These are small things, but if you do it year after year and you keep the maintenance up on it and you keep stepping out the phases, next thing you know, you got a brand new, you know, brand new locker rooms. And we didn't take, we didn't have to go to capital for that. Nobody took a hit, but the soccer coach has to understand that the priority was the football locker room. He's going to get it next year. So you're going to hear complaints from people because they didn't, you know, they, they see, you know, Teacher A getting it, and they feel that they were left out, but the reality is we have a plan in place, and if we stick to this plan, everyone's going to get it. It may take five years, but at the end of the day, we kept it local, we didn't go to the town for more money, and we continue our upgrades.
Christine?
I've got a couple of things to say. First, I think that Rob is masterful at, we don't have maintenance problems that we get all the time. Prior to him, it was like, you know, you're, you're at the last straw, and, you know, we'd be having committees, we'd have to make decisions about massive projects. We don't worry about that. He manages the budget and it's, it's amazing. When you come back in the summer, after the summer, what gets done, the public should know is really outstanding. That being said, as far as the capital plan, I like the capital plan, because I think it recognizes some of the bigger projects that we have on board, that maybe we're absorbing the cost, but to take them off the slate, it, it, it doesn't do them justice. It doesn't do what we have to think about justice as far as phasing it in. So we have a capital plan, and that capital plan has really, you know, been reduced from years ago when I first got on. But it's really great to see where we got started and where we end. And a locker room, I don't want rolled into my budget. I want the locker room on that capital plan so that Rob can work at it little by little. And so that, that's just my opinion. I
You know, you know, and I, I don't think, I don't think that, that what I'm speaking about disagrees with what your opinion is. I think that the, the finance committee says to us every year, what are the pieces that we can reasonably expect you'll come to us for extra funding for? And those are the pieces that we present to them. And that funding, well, at least for the foreseeable future, so long as the Woodland School moves forward, it's going to be awful tough to get.
But we don't ask for that money. We haven't asked for
No, well, no, but that's, we present that as possible expenditures that we want to go to them for. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that right now, Rob has the pieces in place
Mm-hmm.
To get those projects done through our existing budget. So that, in reality, isn't a, a forward-looking, you know, five-year capital improvement plan. Those are pieces, those are little pieces that he's working at through our budget that right now we haven't been going to the town for. And so I think it's not something, it's not what the finance committee is looking for when, when we present to them. And so what I'm, I'm thinking is, is that if we can proactively work these pieces into the budget, and not, and let's not to say that we would abandon what these projects are, and not to say that we wouldn't look for them, but saying that we could probably give better information to the finance committee when it comes to the budgeting process. And, and again, I don't, I don't know that I'm right or I'm wrong, but I think, I think what I would like to see, and I know that, that Rob and Bob spoke about this a little bit, is to set up sort of a five-year plan, looking beyond, you know, that, that new Woodland School. So I don't think it's in disagreement. I agree with everything that you said. I don't think that, that what we're talking about is in disagreement with what you said.
I just, I don't want to keep saying that, you know, Woodland's going to be done, everything else. No, Woodland is done in a broader district sense.
Right.
And so I think it's important to know that there's other capital projects, even if it's not the right presentation right now, to have a capital list, and Woodland, Woodland of course is a priority, but I, I get a little nervous when it's like, we've got to make sure, you know, it's more than Woodland.
Well, I think that we have to make sure that we're being very conservative with the, to the taxpayers' money.
Always.
And we have to make sure that we're spending it in the right way, and that we're taking care of what we can take care of and planning for what we can plan for out of our existing budget. I think that that's, that's really my focus and what I'm concerned about. That and finding as many savings as we can
Mm-hmm.
You know, in this building maintenance, among the building principals, to try and see if we can add more to that bucket, so we can maybe even get some of these projects done more quickly. Scott?
Just as I'm trying to think of, from a, I think it's kind of a combination of things. From a presentation, just kind of an organization perspective, and, and Rob, again, thanks for coming in. This is certainly very comprehensive, and I've, having had family that works in the schools as well as students that are in the schools, and as a parent, I certainly appreciate all the work you've done. Really is amazing what you're able to do, even just going with you through the walkthrough, the day ones for schools. It's impressive. I like the idea of trying to encompass as much as we can for capital improvements into our budget, but I think it needs to be, I think it's even sometimes that, that visibility to the finance committee. Hey, so here's our list of, of what we're doing for capital improvements. We got this. We're going to cover it. We're going to cover it out of our own budget. We're not asking you for money for it, but I think sometimes it's that visibility piece that goes back to the finance committee. To your point, Patrick, of, we've got to be responsible with our taxpayers' money, but I think it's, it's also making sure that we've got good, clear communication amongst all the committees and boards within the town, including town meeting, and the finance committee, that when we go back to them and say, oh, okay, so here's what we do have on the agenda, here's what we are fixing. We're not asking you for money for it at this time, knowing that we're asking, we're asking for a lot right now. We know that we're about to ask for a tremendous amount of money potentially for either the renovation or construction of potentially a new school. My own personal opinion is, is I, I would be just having that community, that level of communication, I think, is going to be important, so that we continue to demonstrate to the finance committee and to the taxpayers in Milford that we are being extremely financially responsible. We are phasing things in, we're not continuing to go back to the well.
I think, I think perhaps what we should do is update this report, and we've spoken in the past about updating this report on a quarterly basis.
The capital?
Yeah, yeah, we've talked about
Done annually.
Yeah, we've done it annually, but I think that what it's turned into is, you know, it used to be these gigantic projects, these multimillion-dollar projects, and they, they've broken down to $120,000 projects, $20,000 projects, $15,000 projects. It was a $5,000 project on, on the most recent one. So I wonder if, I wonder if perhaps the structure of the plan, if we change the structure of the plan, so we're, we're reflecting our long-term costs but also demonstrating the things that we're fixing within our budget, maybe that might be the best compromise to make sure that we're getting the right information out to everybody. Everybody sees what we're doing and it's transparent and it's easy to see. Does that, does that sound like something? That would be a restructuring of that plan, but I think it makes sense.
I think that's better, because I think if you absorb it into your budget, it gets lost. A lot of big projects are done, and we are very on top of those projects, and Rob's on top of those projects. And so that recognition is really important for the town to see that, you know, it's a huge budget, the schools are a huge budget item. And so we are, but we're doing our due diligence to make sure we can get everything done that we can. And I think that visibility is, is important for the district. I think, big things get done. It's not just painting. Big things get done.
No, absolutely, and, and you said it, and I'll echo it. I mean, you do a tremendous job here, Rob. I mean, you, you really do. I don't think that anybody, I mean, the amount of work that gets done here, the amount of work that got done at Middle School East over the summer, I mean, it was unbelievable. I mean, it's, it's parts of that building, just the whitewashing that was done. I mean, the building looks like we replaced all the light fixtures in it. So I don't think anyone's now playing that, and you should absolutely be commended for it. There's no question about it. I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't mean to.
No, I, I'm thinking about the, what may be worth doing, and I'll sit with Rob and Kathy before the next meeting, and put draft documents forward that modifies the existing capital, capital plan, which really just has the one capital, President Woodland School. It does list, as you recall, these smaller projects, and at the back is projects that we did in fact complete. Remember Pat Connelly had asked to make sure that, that shows, because that gets lost in the, in the memory, and even to take it to the next level. So maybe we could almost look at this thing as, like, in three chapters, right? The chapter one being the true capital projects that are forward prospective, about five, 10 years. Sort of secondary, which is what Rob is pulling off of in, in, in small pieces each, as he's able to. And then behind that is all the accomplishments over the last 10 years. So you have this document, yeah, maybe it's a little bit bulky, but for the people who might think the schools have been neglected, man, you have a great reference tool to go back and say, well, that's clearly not the case, because I think what's happened is we take it off the radar, so we know we're focusing on those, but meanwhile, it's, it's left. So it'll be very easy for me to take what you've given already. It's really no heavy lifting for you, Rob, on this one. I'll just fold that into the document, so we have this chronology, and then we can sit down and talk about what you have for timelines coming up for, whether it's roofing or windows, whatever it may be, and try to map that somewhere prospectively. So I'll, I'll put that together as a draft for the next meeting.
Do we agree?
Yeah, I have a, I have a sense of how that can look.
I, I think that sounds great. The only, I only caution the committee that, you know, and I don't believe you are, but don't ever say we're not going to go to capital again, all right? Because that, that's not reality.
No, no, if, if we need a roof, if we need boilers, I mean, that's different. And, and I'll tell you, the finance committee understands that. I mean, we've gotten that commitment that obviously if we have a roof that goes, or if we have a boiler system that goes, then, I mean, obviously, we need to work together to make sure that the big projects are fixed too. So I don't think that that's the intent of anyone here.
All right, and then the other piece of it is, if the administration, the committee decides that something, you know, let's take security and surveillance, for example, if it's not wise to phase it because we have issues, then move it forward. I mean, everything can't always be accomplished in phasing. I think we're doing a great job of phasing things, but if something, something becomes a priority that, you know, we got, there will be a point where we're going to have to move something forward. I, I, I hope I explained myself enough, but I mean, there is, there is going to come a time when phasing will not accomplish what the school district wants. And when that, that happens, then we're going to go capital.
Yeah. Scott?
What I would just ask, and I agree with you, I think what I would ask and what I think is, is fair to the community and to the taxpayers and to the committee as well is, and it's tough to say, as proactively as you can help with guiding us on that
Mm-hmm.
The quicker and easier it's going to be to be able to get those things accomplished.
Correct.
I think when, when we find out that, when we come into work and there's a roof that's missing
Right.
It's much more difficult, right? So it goes much quicker, and certainly that adds a sense of urgency to it. You know, again, it's, the financial times in, in, for all residents as well as the state, as you are well, well aware, are not good and not showing signs of strength and recovery in the near future. So I, I just, that would be my one ask. As proactive as you can be on it, the better.
You know, I think that speaks to a point too that came up in our last meeting, where there was a policy that we put in place when it came to investigating bullying, where ended up we had a duplication of, of investigation where the assistant principal was investigating the same thing that the principal was. And so it was a policy that we put in place that we thought about, that we thought would work, but it's a practical matter, it wasn't as effective in the building as it was. And I think having this conversation, talking about these buildings, having a more comprehensive report, so we can decide what the priorities are for the school district, I think that that's something that is going to pay big benefits and is going to allow us to really demonstrate that we're in control of what's happening with some of these improvements and with what's happening with that budget. Okay. Any members have any questions? Of course.
Rob, I could, for myself, the committee, and for the, the people that are watching, take you back, only because you brought up the, the terminology purchase order. So you negotiate, as Rob said, you got some sink issues that are whatever, it's a $2,500 repair, and, you know, you call on your contractor that you've used over the 10-year period, and you negotiated for $2,500. What is the safeguard that you use that that bill ends up in this warrant for what you negotiated for? Do you personally write every purchase order that has to do with maintenance?
I do.
And then the invoice comes to you and you have to sign off on it?
I write the P.O.
Yep.
I, the P.O. then goes to Kathy for approval. Once Kathy approves the P.O., it comes back to me. I get the invoice. On the invoice, I put the P.O. and sign it. I then log it into a system that I have in my office and send it off to be paid. And once it's paid, a check number is, is, is put on a spreadsheet showing the town paid. So if the vendor comes to me and says, I didn't get paid for X amount of dollars for this job, I can pull that back up and say, check number, blah, 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 and I can call the town hall and ask them, was this check cashed? And so we have a pretty good checks and balance.
The reason I ask that question, I deal with it all day long, and then I say to you, Kathy, how do you, so you, you take your information that you get from Rob, if there's an issue with it, you'll notify Rob?
I, I do not increase any purchase order without talking to the requestor and let them know that the invoice might have come in above what they've requested, and ask them to approve it and to review the invoice themselves. So that P.O. is the safeguard. There is no purchase, almost no purchase that goes without a P.O. in our $39 million budget, from every building principal to a director.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Rob.
Okay, thanks, Pat.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good work.
Forgot your budget, Rob.
Rob, you cleaned up nicely.
You need that.
The next item on our agenda is the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
I have for the committee's approval this evening, four warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of $305,830.93.
A motion from Don, a second from Mike. All in favor of approving the warrant? Opposed? Do you have any mis in favor of the motion carries?
Second warrant is in the amount of $40,453.91.
A motion from Rob, a second from Christine. All in favor? Opposed? Do you have any mis in favor of the motion carries?
The third warrant is in the amount of $10,316.18.
A motion from Scott, a second from Don. All in favor? Opposed? Do you have any mis in favor of the motion carries?
And the final warrant is in the amount of $393,075.96.
A motion from Mike, a second from Christine. All in favor? Opposed? Do you have any mis in favor of the motion carries?
And the committee also has a list of the latest hires from our previous meeting. No vote is required. And that's all for this evening. Thank you, Patrick. No jury. No gifts.
First, first. The next item on our agenda are subcommittee updates. So I would like to start with the policy subcommittee. I know that we did receive a distribution for the policy subcommittee.
So we met, and that is the bullying policy, that we made some changes based on the advice of the, the feedback that Mr. Tremblay got from staff. So it's for the committee's review.
Okay.
And we also talked about the athletics policy, and then we're working on that.
Yeah, I, I think, just to kind of, for the benefit of the public as well, essentially what we did was, we, we evaluated some of the redundancies that you were talking about, and really some of the handcuffing that was done with the prin, some of the requirements and some of the language. Really went through, kind of cleaned up some of the language, and essentially bookended it. So the principal still ultimately has the responsibility for communication, ultimate final say, but is able to delegate some of the, some of the investigations component. But still ultimately has to be very hands-on, on both end, on, throughout the entire process.
I mean, I, I looked, just looking through some of the language changes, I mean, it essentially for the public's benefit, again, you know, it's adding words like, "or the principal's designee," or "it can be assigned by that principal," and essentially for the sole purpose of eliminating some of, some of that, that duplication, that duplication of, of effort. This policy is something that we need to vote to adopt. So is it the subcommittee's opinion that this policy is, is ready for adoption?
Yeah, well, based on what we saw, yes.
Okay. Does any member have any comments on the policy as it, is rewritten and currently reads?
I'll add one thing, and that is, you know, the reason why we did this isn't because we don't want people to have to, to, you know, do the investigation, or twice, or whatever. It's, in these situations, we want to get to, you know, a decision quickly, and it's important for the kids as well as the families. So it was with good intent, and I think they did a great job. We shared this information with the principals the other day. They seemed very excited about it. So we'll continue to monitor it, and, and if we need to, to address it again in the future, we will. But this is really just to make sure that when situations arise, they're addressed quickly and fairly for everybody.
Any other members have comments? A motion from Scott, a second from Christine to accept the policy. All in favor of accepting the new bullying policy as revised by the policy subcommittee? All opposed? Do you have any misin favor the motion carries? Thank you very much for your work, and we look forward to the athletics policy update. We also have a safety and security subcommittee. I know that there's been at least one meeting, it's our last session, perhaps two. I know that there was some information that came in those meetings, so I'd like to open the floor to whomever would like to start.
Yeah, we, we, we met with, again, the principals, and Bob, and Rob Quinn. He laid out, you know, the, the phased approach on the cameras, which is fantastic. One of the things that we, was addressed in the previous meeting, was the concern about server capacity and everything else like that. And Rob found a server down in Brookside that has a lot more capacity than here at the high school, so they're actually going to swap those out. And the new one actually would be able to support sixty-four cameras moving forward. So, you know, that's a huge improvement over what we have today. The phased-in approach is, you know, that there's wiring involved, but we came up, or not we, they came up with a schedule of the priority areas that we want to make sure that we're putting in new cameras to cover the troubled areas that have been identified by the principals, and make sure that we can, we can get that up and running. And we were told, you know, the very first day those cameras were put out in the, out in the fields, they've, they found a couple of kids doing something wrong underneath the bleachers. We had the police officers in this meeting who said it was a fantastic job, and, and they absolutely love being able to see, you know, just more eyes on, on the kids. And, you know, there was an accident up against the fence, and they were able to show that, you know, it was just one kid and just had an accident, it wasn't, you know, any, anything crazy going on. So, you know, everything's going great there. And, and again, I mean, Rob Quinn is just, I mean, he's amazing at, at really putting this all together. I can't say enough good things about him. One of the things that came up that was alarming for me, when you hear it, you'll see why that's funny, why I said alarming, but.
Pun intended.
No, pun intended. So Mike Tempesta, you know, I, I met with him before, and I said, hey, you know, can you walk me around? I'd like to see the, you know, the doors and the security and how they're locked. And when we went outside, he opened up the gate, and we were walking, oh, we were shown camera positions too. So he, he opened up the gate to the teacher's parking lot in the back. And this was at one o'clock, and I kind of stared at him for a while, and, and I said, why didn't the alarm go off? And he said, well, we, we haven't had that in a while. And I guess about a year and a half ago, it was disabled. And I said, well, wait a second, this is, you know, I remember when I was a substitute, if anybody went out that door, that alarm went off and everybody went running, because nobody is supposed to be accessing the back of the building. And I said, well, that kind of defeats the purpose. I mean, you have somebody up front monitoring the people coming in and out, the back doors are supposed to be locked. You know, the only thing I could think of is maybe the teachers needed easy access to their cars, but there's a door by the band room, which I could easily go in and out, that locks. So I suggested that we fix this immediately, and that we have the alarms put in place, because anybody walking in the back has access to just about any point in that building. I mean, you can go to the, the gym, the calf, the C wing, or the A wing in seconds. And it's, I, I don't even know if we have a camera on that back gate yet. So, you know, that's, that's even more alarming. So we, we asked to have the alarm put, put back. We asked Bob to announce that in the newsletter out to the parents. One of the issues was kids were being dropped off back there. That is not where you should be dropping off your kids. You drop them off in front or in the back. Not, not in the teacher parking lot. That's for the teachers. At eight o'clock, those doors are to be locked and not reopened until the end of school. So if a teacher has to go in and out of there, you go through the band door, or come, you know, if you had to leave during the day, you should be coming back to the front of the building yourselves. So Joe Gresham, the police officer, one of the police officers, had a great idea too, because that's a wrought iron fence. And he pointed out that anybody can just put their hand between the wrought iron and slap the gate open and set the alarm or, or get in. So he suggested we get a metal plate and put it up on, against the gate, so that way, you know, nobody has access to doing that, which was a great suggestion. So I asked Rob to get that done. I asked him not to wait until the next meeting. I mean, this is something I wanted done immediately. You know, I, I asked, I believe, a week from tomorrow to be the deadline on that. So, but it was just really shocking to me, where here we are trying to secure the building, going through all these efforts of having hall monitors, and people watching doors, and everything else that, you know, we all thought was in place, and everybody was doing a great job. And all of a sudden, I realized, wow, anybody could just walk in, and there was nothing there to stop it. So, again, it was alarming. We're going to address it, and it should be fixed. So he was gonna, Bob was gonna send out a notice in the newsletter. I've asked him to inform the staff, and I also suggested that, you know, the first week that you implement the, or reconnect the alarm, that perhaps you do have a hall monitor stationed back there, just, you know, making sure nobody's going in, in and out, and setting it off every two minutes. So that's the update on the safety and security.
When I came in, the communication that comes out of these meetings, it's pretty amazing. You know, you come in, you've got a group of people, and you're in an environment where you think, we're going to use the back gate as an example. When that question came up, how long has the back gate not been alarmed? Everybody in the room went looking for the person that had the answer. Nobody really had, had the answer. And so we, we asked, the next question we asked is, why? And you get the same thing. You know, Rob did an excellent job. We, we were talking about the security and the fire system. The fire department has their own keys, they're in lock boxes. But the police department's not allowed to have keys to the buildings. So Rob had set it up, because who was getting called? So it's all set up now in every school, that when one sensor goes, he gets a call, and the alarm company gets a call. If that is only one sensor, nothing happens, because it could be a piece of paper on a wall or something, because they have motion sensors and everything. If the second sensor trips, then the police are called, okay? And then the building principal is called at this time, because they need to be, gain access to the building. But with that, Nancy Angelini chimes in and says, well, but what if I come down to the building at three o'clock in the morning to check the building out? So I kind of looked at her, and, and she's actually had cases where, by the time she gets here, the building has been checked, so it's secure on the outside. She unlocks the building and goes in herself, and, well, the two policemen are sitting over here, and they're looking at one another like, why, why don't you have a, where's the police? Well, she doesn't, she didn't know, or she wasn't thinking that, you know, it's okay to call them from her cellphone and say, I'm crossing into Milford now, can you have somebody meet me at the school? And so it was decided in that meeting that nobody goes into a school unattended, because of so many places that people have to hide, and the police department don't know the layout of each school. So they need the building principal, or designee, to walk with them and say, there's, you know, there's a corridor there, there's a set of stairs there. You know, so that came out of that meeting. And then Rob went farther to say, if the building principal isn't available, this is the person. It's all, it's all documented. It's just an, an amazing thing to see. But to, to sit in the room and, and all of a sudden, something, a discussion starts, and something that you really think you have covered a hundred percent, you really, you really don't. And, and we're able to, you know, to settle it, you know, right then and there. We, we had a little adjustment on the, on the bullying thing. There was a little gray area of, you know, who was the, you know, Bob, who opened it, who closed it, and, and we were able to work through it and settle it all down. So I mean, it's just, to me, you know, having had our second meeting, it's the second time I've walked out of the room and said, wow, that's a powerful. And it's just in conversation, that's all it is, and having the right people in the room.
And, and the double trigger thing has been really helpful, because like Rob said, there's six hundred and sixty fire alarms here. So he said, you're going to have a problem with one of them almost every day, you know, with batteries or, or whatever. So one of the things that Nancy had pointed out, that during the summer, before that double trigger process was put in place, she was getting calls all the time to go down in the school. Since that's been on place, none of the principals have had to respond to a call. So it's a huge help. The reason why we're asking the principals to go, you know, is, you know, somebody has to go there to enable them to have access to the building. And one of the other things I was happy to hear was, there was a three-person line, you know, set in place. So it's the principal first. If they're not available, then it goes to Rob Quinn. If Rob Quinn can't get here, then it's the maintenance, the custodian. And the reason why we were trying to avoid having the custodian be on the front line, was that if you call a custodian, you have to pay them for four hours, just to go and unlock a door. And so, you know, it's a huge cost. And especially when it was happening all the time. So, so if this is, does become a burden with the double trigger, I would almost feel more comfortable moving the custodians back if it's not happening all, all the, you know, that repetitious. So that came out of that. I thought that was fantastic. And then the other thing that I did want to highlight was, because one of the things is the courts. So I asked the principals, how often have their assistant principals, and principals had, had to go to the courts, or, you know, since school started. And there was one that had to be there all day from eight to one. And then there was, and that same person had to be there another time for, for a couple hours. And then there were, two other assistant principals had to go for two hours. So cumulatively, out of all the assistant principals and principals, you're looking at a total of two days out of the month, in the first month. And we're going to continue to monitor that as well. Yeah. Again, we'll continue to monitor it, right?
Loaded on a laptop, the cameras. And the cameras, they're switching all around the height. So you're sitting there, and you're watching, and one point, I said to, to Officer Chan, I said, this is really, a really amazing thing. And there was a young man walking down this corridor, and he says, yeah, he said, watch this, and he just went like this. And just as the young man started to make his way into the auditorium, you actually, you know, it was, what you could see was absolutely amazing, you know? And they just keep switching. You know, it's, so, I mean.
Just a quick question. Two things really. It's, one, is there, is the policy in place now, so are we, do we still have faculty that's allowed to be in buildings by themselves? Or is that, I just want to make sure that I was clear on that. Or is, we are not allowed to have anybody in a building by themselves at this point?
I don't know whether we have any policy language.
Or policy, but just in general, are, should people, I mean.
The, I mean, like, for example, if you have coaches, or the A D would come in, there's going to be teams there, and that sort of thing. But somebody coming into, I mean, the high school, and I'm assuming, I mean, largely the high schools, that what's used mostly every day of the week, you know, there's usually a custodian or two here, and people using the building, people working in the building, but not aware of anybody that comes in alone. I mean, I have, in my office, from time to time, in the central office, a separate alarm system in there. You, I don't know, Kathy?
I have.
I mean, just as a safety piece.
Yeah, I just think about from a safety and security.
Yeah, I can, I can.
I think about whether it's.
I can look into that.
You know, just as an example. So after a football game, right? So if I, unfortunately, you got to kind of think in the, think about, if somebody's got the wrong intentions. After a football game, somebody's walking a cash box back, and they're in the building by themselves. Or there's somebody else that's in the building that's getting locked, you know? When you think about the safety and security of those individuals, I want to make sure that we're.
I'll look into that.
Thinking through that a little bit.
One of the things that we learned too, in the meeting, is, one, a lot of these cameras are on motion sensors, so it can pick up, and it'll just turn on when, when it senses motion. And the other piece was, Mike was showing us this, the door access, right? And that not everybody has it, and there's only certain doors that have it, that allows them to come in basically keyless. But the thing is, is that tracks every single time that person comes in, out, what time, who it was. What Mike has asked Rob Quinn to do is, they're looking at, not adding more to the doors, but just changing the existing lock system that they have, using that. Because right now, for Mike to go get the analytics, or the analysis from that, he literally has to plug a device into the lock, download it at every single one of these doors, where they're trying to get one that's on one single network. So it's real easy to just be able to go on your laptop and be able to track, oh, who came in here this weekend, and be able to see it.
So just, you know, just kind of thinking through that. Then, the other question I had was, thinking about the call list for when there's an event, was there a thought that was given with that priority list based on geography? So I think about, you know, I think about, okay, good.
That's why we.
You've got some principals that maybe live, you know, our assistant principal may live three streets over, the principal may live, you know, forty-five minutes away, we're calling the principal first.
That's why we had the three-person.
So it was given, geography was given priority as well. Perfect. Good.
And just to piggyback where Don said, what's really nice about those keyless entry systems, the FOBs, you can actually deactivate individual FOBs if it's for a coach, and there's a game getting out at eight, their FOB dies out at nine. So they can't get into the building after nine. And that's all done through the system and the software.
That's right.
That that FOB is now deactivated from nine at night until six in the morning.
Is that part of the upgraded network system, or is that part of the existing system?
Existing.
And he also made reference to another area where they, to speak to that, Kathy, is, one of the problems that they have is that the alarm is not being set properly, because you can set the alarm in such a way that the only access point you have is from, say, from the side of the building, and you only have access to the locker room.
That's right.
What they were having was situations where kids would come out of the locker room, down the corridor, upstairs, forgot the history book, you know, and the alarm's not on, because they're not setting. So he, again, in the meeting, he said he's going to get everybody together and say, listen, when you set these alarms, you know, you block that area off, you set everything else on, you know?
How many cameras totally will there be when it's time being phased in?
That's a good question. You know, again, I think you can keep adding more and more. And that, to, to Rob's point, is he wanted a, you know, he didn't want to be tied into one system, he wanted it to be device agnostic, so that he could use, you know, if he, somebody gave a camera, or, you know, he got one repaired, or, you know, they were different brands, or, you know, two years from now, somebody's cheaper, you know, you can leverage it.
There's no plan.
But there's, well, you know what, there was, there was a master plan drawn up a couple of years ago, I guess. And it was, you know, to cover the entire school, you needed something like a hundred and sixty-eight cameras. I mean, that's covering everything. And realistically, that's probably never going to happen. So, you know, again, I know the server can handle sixty-eight, sixty-four, and I know that currently we have approximately twenty at this point. So, and one of the things that he was trying to do is bring the ones from the, the Brookside and the Fields into this one server as well, so that way it can be all monitored. And one of the few, the next phased, phases that he's going to do is not only have it on the laptops, but enable it on their iPhones. And not just their iPhones, but the police iPhones. So that, that's the, the next upgrade that he's working on.
But, but the security company determines where.
No, we do.
These are places we do.
We do. We do.
There, and I asked the question because in the back of the high school, close to where you're talking about where that gate is.
Yeah.
I guess I have an issue with that path that leads from the teacher's parking lot to that back parking lot over to the new athletic field. It is a very dark, heavily wooded area. And there is lighting in it at night, but to me, it still seems, it's not a terribly long path. I mean, it's, it's a good distance. But to me, to open that, I don't know if you, if there's a plan to put a camera there or if it would, if it would work to have a camera there. To me, it seems, and I don't know what it would cost or what would be involved, but to clear that out of, it's just, it's just brush, it seems. I mean, you could probably leave the bigger trees, but, you know, in my opinion, if you open that up, it makes it for a little bit safer of an area, I think. Even safety wise, just from people lurking in there or just trying to navigate through there. You know, because kids are cutting through the woods to get onto the path and it's, you know, maybe you can bring it up in your next meeting. I mean, we don't need to discuss it at length here, Bob.
We can do that.
No, there you go. It's a great one.
Wind in my weed wrapper, how about it?
Yeah, but then they can get supplies to make it boarded and that's a great project.
That's perfect, Christine.
I want to, by the way, I want to thank Don and Mike for a lot of the activity that's been happening because of the Security Committee. It's been one of our most active subcommittees and it seems like it's paying immediate dividends. I mean, almost immediately upon its formation. So I just want to thank you for all the time that you've been putting in because these things that are coming to light now are things that we haven't discussed before as part of this committee. And it seems like there's now an opportunity to put all of the right people in the room at the same time. The principals are in the room, with school committee members, with buildings and grounds maintenance. And it seems like there's discussions happening now that wasn't happening before. And you two should get the credit for facilitating it. The next item on our agenda is new business. Does any member have new business?
Yeah, one quick thing. I did get a call from a concerned parent asking, they thought they heard or maybe understood that SATs may no longer be administered in Milford. I guess I'm asking, is that true or it had to do with the loss of the supervisor of guidance? Is, is there any truth to that? Is there an issue there?
For the current year, because we are working with interim with Peter Bruce and he no longer, we're kind of working with Ron Santa Croce and now with Kathleen Hebden. So we're working with two part-time people to fill the gap right now. In the past, that had been coordinated because there's a lot of site coordination that has to happen. So I'd like to go back to offering that. So this year, we are offering, I believe there's another SAT coming up in, I think, through November. I think for the remainder part of the year though, we have to send the kids out to other sites. I know Kerry Bonik was working on that, just because we don't have the resources to coordinate the SATs for now. So instead of doing it wrong, we want to make sure that these kids get this, the intent that I have is to make sure we get this back, but making sure we have the right person to oversee it. I don't want that to be piecemeal.
Yeah. Yeah, I would hate to.
If these are taking, they're taking SATs.
Yeah, but that's a big convenience. It's nice to have the kids taking them here and, um, you know, it would be, it would be good if we could get the people, get people involved that could become knowledgeable with how to coordinate this.
And that is the intent, is to bring that back.
How much time is involved that the part-time person couldn't handle this?
It's actually, I haven't done it myself to know. But I know that the matter of planning it, because you're talking about just just Milford High School kids coming, people from all over, the building's open, you know, basically all day long, all the people who are the proctors, all the facility, just coordination, it's fairly involved as I understand it. But to not have somebody overseeing that or to have two people who, you know, are just really, we're just trying to fill the gap right now. We've tried to do an exhaustive search for a replacement for Peter Bruce. As you know, that, all that happened late in the year of trying to find a replacement. We'll start that process in January going forward.
Yeah, no.
So I think for now, what we're trying to do is to make sure, if we're gonna do it, let's do it correctly. Let's not just do it piecemeal or hope that we get it right. And not having somebody that we can rely on to do that, which I, you know, right now Kerry's picking that up. Kerry Bonik is picking that up for the, through November. Again, the high school principal and I will, have been talking about that. We'll continue to try to get that back. If we can try to preserve it this year, we'll.
I will, but so, so.
But the kids are taking the SATs.
If Kerry's driving it for the November one, um, and if you and Mike are gonna look into it, if you could just report back to us, because if it is possible to keep it, and if that means, you know, you and Mike getting more involved in it or whatever, I think that's really important, not just to the kids, but to the families in this town to offer it here and not have to make, I don't know how many hundreds of kids we're talking about to go to local areas. But if we can, I would appreciate it if you would just report back to us and, uh, and let us know if that is, when it's dead, it's dead, or if we can save it, we can save it. If you can just keep us in the loop.
Will do.
But what do they, there's only certain times the SATs are offered. So November and must be like February or something.
Yeah, there's times coming. We have a couple more administrations that are, will be scheduled, so. But I'll follow up with the committee on that.
The guidance department in general typically runs that. It probably makes sense to have all of the guidance staff familiar with the process. You know, it's that one, only one person knows what's going on. Yeah, and they're gone, sure. You know, you're sort of up the river.
It's just getting the interest of the department. It's not, you know, giving up all those days to do it. But I think we can, you know, we can make it attractive, people who want to oversee it.
It'd be nice to see a team effort to keep it in place. That's all I'm gonna say.
Well, currently it's not, yeah. Yeah.
I think you did such a good job, Bob, of thinking creatively to make sure French was offered in the seventh grade. I think I would like you to try and apply some of that same creative thinking maybe to see if we can restore the SATs to Milford.
You got it. I'll see what I can do.
There's another, any other member of new business?
You know, having Rob in here and giving us this information on the, on the projects is fantastic. One of the things I'd like to have in getting prepared for the, for the budget, can I, can we get a report showing us, basically a stipend report? What I'd like to see is who the recipients are, the amounts, a description of what it's for and whether it's in their contract or not.
Yeah, I seem to recall seeing one at some point, but it's been a long time.
It's in part of the contract.
Yeah.
Teacher's contract.
Yeah.
Well, I thought we saw it last spring.
But there are stipends that aren't in contract, would those be in that too?
Yeah, like all the coaching, everything, that's all in the teacher's contract. Everything from.
There's quite a few outside of the contract.
It'd be nice to see what the total liability is on them and what each of the descriptions are and how people are filling them. I think it'd be interesting to, as part of, as part of that budget process. Also too, Bob, I know that the MCAS information was distributed to teachers this week. When can we, and don't expect the report using the new guidelines and the new data analysis, but when would you expect to report to the committee and to the public at least some preliminary results from, from our MCAS?
I could probably do that at the next meeting. I've taken on the MCAS analysis work this year myself as the committee now is for curriculum. So I'm doing a presentation tomorrow. In fact, anybody who'd like to attend that tomorrow, trying to make it as enjoyable as possible on a Friday afternoon. But so one o'clock tomorrow afternoon, I'll be walking the staff through the entire district staff about what the process for MCAS analysis will be, uh, how we're looking at the data differently than we have in past years. So I won't repeat what I've said in prior meetings, but that will all be laid out tomorrow. What's, what's exciting to me about the way that lays out is that the second half of tomorrow's presentation is about the continued training, about the educator evaluation process and procedures, which now we can have a meaningful conversation about how to link student performance data to the educator evaluation process and procedures. It's a natural linkage between the two parts of the presentation, so each about forty-five minutes. So that presentation is ready. I already have it on my laptop ready to go. So at any point, whenever the committee wants to give it to the teachers tomorrow and at the next meeting or the meeting after, I can, I can show you. I think it may make sense to have a couple of meetings, presentations on MCAS to show the baseline data as one phase of that, speaking of phases. The next phase showing what we're doing, sort of mid-cycle on what the data and what we've seen for what we expect to see for growth. And then end of the year and what we've actually accomplished. So I think the way to do that is that we'll build into it a report from me to the committee about what our curriculum committee has done. And this will really be evidentiary for the goals as well. So it'll all make sense to the goals that were presented to the committee. So that said, I envision having at least three presentations on MCAS, not a one long one that goes on forever, but a quick snapshot of what we're doing with it, what it means. And I can do that at the next meeting if you'd like, as the first one.
Yeah, I mean, I think the committee certainly wants to know about that. And I think also too, now that you mentioned it and to piggyback on it, in regards to the teacher's goal setting, I know that we all spent quite a bit of time struggling through the eighty-page document that we use to evaluate Bob. And I know the teachers are using the exact same document to set up their own goals. So I guess I'd like to know how, how that process is working, how they're relating that to the MCAS goals or if they can relate that to MCAS results and student performance and how that's going to work or how you see that work or how you see that working as we move forward.
Do you want that for the next presentation or do you want that now?
Well, no, I think the next presentation. We can treat it with more time, with the respect that it deserves.
Sure. Happy to do it. Up on the next agenda, that's.
Debbie Burridge. Any other member of new business? Does any member have old business? I have one piece, a member had asked at an earlier meeting, Bob, that the athletic director investigate getting our coaches access to anger management training as due course. I don't know if you have any chance to look into that, but I think that's something that we'd like to.
Yeah, I have spoken with Rich Biggerstapp about that. I'll follow up with him. And Don and I did speak about that as well. And it will be also part of the presentation that the subcommittee will make on the revisions to our athletic handbook or the sign-off page that we've reviewed in the policy subcommittee. So I'll further research that. The coaches, as I understand it, they do have a anger management as part of their MIA requirement to become a coach. And as I understand it, this is now more like just a preventative or refresher course for all the coaches.
Conversation on this is, I'm not making every coach go through the anger management course as it is. You know, go down and take it. What I've asked is, is it possible, because of everything that's been happening, is it possible for them to just come up here and run a clinic? You know, it doesn't have to be the full deep dive, but just, I want to be able to respond to the parents that are always asking me about this, just to let them know that we have addressed it. And if we can do something like that, I think it would be appreciated by a lot of people in this town.
Bob, just to add on to that, one of the things that we had talked about as part of the policy subcommittee, particularly pertaining to the coaching, um, training, was, I wanted to see if you had an update. Are all coaches, so I want to make sure I'm very clear what I define coach. Coach, JV, assistant, head coach, throwing coach, water coach. Anybody that gets anywhere near a kid that has a coach sign on them. Are they all required to take that same MIA course? Just thinking back, and it's been many years, but having coached in Milford schools, that was not required of assistant coaches. It was only required by the head coach of the school. So I'll give an example. If you're a soccer coach, you have a, you have the varsity coach who's considered the head coach, the JV coach and either a freshman coach or some other specialty coach. The varsity coach was the only one that was previously required. The other coaches could ride on his certification. There was no additional courses required. Is that still the case or are all these coaches now required to take their classes individually?
I'll have to find that and get back to you on that.
I can tell you personally, when I was an assistant coach here a few years ago, I didn't have to take any tests.
Okay, I'll get back to you on that one.
And the members of old business. We do not have an executive session this evening. So if I could have a motion from Rob to adjourn, second from Don, all in favor. Posen and Miss in favor. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.